First, let me ask people to mute themselves so we don't have a lot of interference. And actually, the meeting of the City Council Subcommittee on Commerce will be held on Tuesday, July 21 at 6:00 p.m. The following subject matter will be discussed. Discuss the developing plans to address unconscious bias and systematic
A participant has joined the meeting.
... discussion of possibilities of creating, among other remedies, an office of diversity and inclusion in a city, a permanent task force on racism, a program for comprehensive and mandatory inherent bias training. We will spend some time on talking about three areas to begin with. Then the Chelsea Young Black Community members have sent a communication to the city manager. We will let the city manager have time to respond to that. And then we would have the young folk from the Chelsea Black community respond to his comment. So at this time, I'd open it up to everybody. The first thing to talk about is how people are looking at, how we're looking at an office of diversity and inclusion, or what other alternatives that we might look at for the city manager and the city council, along with the community, to address. So we'll open it up for any questions from anybody. Councilor Brown, if you want to make a few comments? No? Okay. Nobody?
Do we have a copy of the agenda?
Well, actually, I had drawn these three items just so that we could establish some conversation around what the needs is in our community. So at this time, I see the council president has joined. Now I'd ask him if he might want to make any comments in regards to an office of diversity or inclusion or other alternatives.
No, Councilor Robinson. At this time, I'm just going to join the meeting. And I appreciate you running it in my absence while I'm running via internet. So I'll just listen as we go along.
Okay, Councilor. Actually, we have a number of people that we had invited to the meeting. It actually is city manager, the honorable members of the council, city solicitor Cheryl Watson, superintendent of schools, Brian Geis, Chief Abenese, Joan Prambo, Jade Umember, Cal Umember, Ola Baidu, Molly Baldwin, Reverend Sandra Whitley, Henry Wilson, Barbara Pucci, the Patrolman's Union, Superior Officers' Union, the Board of Health and the Human Rights Commission. So...
I want to take the roll call to check out who's here.
Yes. Should get a roll call. You want to just check out who's here?
Yeah.
All right, the city managers here?
Yes.
City council members, Giovanni Recupero, yourself, Roy Avellaneda, and myself, and I believe that's it. And we have Naomi, I'm sorry. And Damali is not.
Are you taking the roll call? Are you there?
But also, I would like to get a call as to who's on the conference call with us. Want to unmute?
I'm sorry, I think you stopped. Superintendent, it's Eva.
Can I say that I'm getting really bad at this from having the greatest apartment ever in Chelsea? Because it was turned to double up.
All right.
I've been at our parties by now.
You love your rep.
Superintendent, Seager, Emmanuel. Are you, Councilor Watson, you see it?
Tayaz here for the health.
Board of Health. Board of Health.
Right. Thank you.
Sanadiya, Abala, and Adele.
Adele Schlotzauer.
I don't want to book your name.
That's okay. Thanks so much. It's Schlotzauer. I'm on the Chelsea Human Rights Commission.
All right, thank you. See Victor Ramirez, Stachan, Reverend Whitley, Oka.
Present.
Nicole Barrett.
Present.
Molly Baldwin, Mary Santiago. Kenny Chukwue. Yumombo, is that Yumombo?
Kenai Chukwue, is that who you're talking to?
Yeah. Speaking to everybody.
Okay.
I see we got Nicole Barrett on. Did we miss anybody?
Counselor Judith Garcia is on the line as well. I'm here, present.
Judith Garcia is on.
We're never going to get everybody.
And that's it.
Yeah, I was just talking.
Actually, the format will be so once now that everybody is on, we're going to have just a brief discussion around three items, which is the office of diversity and inclusion or other alternatives, permanent task force on racism, a program for comprehensive mandatory inherent bias training for all employees. After we get done with that discussion, the young black community have sent a communication to the city manager. The city manager will take some time to respond to that. And then the young members, along with Cheryl Watson, will help guide us the rest of the way with the young members of the Chelsea Black community. So in starting, I'd ask any of my colleagues if they want to make any sort of statement or any conversation around diversity and inclusion.
My colleagues, do you mean people in the city council or other stakeholders?
We're talking to everybody who's participating in the meeting. You want to speak, Emmanuel?
Sure. Let me just make sure I unmute. Sure.
We lost this connection.
Yeah.
And Molly Baldwin would like to say something? Or Damali would like to say something? Damali Vido? Damali Vido, you have the floor.
I can't hear you, Damali. She's coming back.
Okay, Emmanuel's back. Did we just lost him again?
Probably.
Yeah. We can hear your voice.
I don't know who's speaking now, but if I still have Wi-Fi connection, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Oh, I was just going to say, I'm very grateful that it's being convened. This is very critical discussion that I am very grateful for all the stakeholders present. This issue overlaps with all of our missions, whether it's health, education, governance. And one thing that I wanted to commend everyone for is the honesty that we will expect from people because I'm very actually conflicted about this, even though I was on a diversity and inclusion committee back in one of my former employers at the American Academy of Arts and Sciences. We actually found out that we had a lot unintended consequences that actually detrimentally affected minority people. And we need to be very careful about what we do and to go beyond just airing of grievances and symbolic gestures. And I'm very grateful for this discussion.
We thank you for those comments. And Damali Vido.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Councilor Robinson. I just want to say that I'm happy that we're having a discussion around this, that I am in absolute agreement that we need a diversity and inclusion portion of this human resources department where we can try to diversify our staff a little more to reflect the community. There are study after study that shows that the more diversity that you have in any setting that people prosper.
A participant has left the meeting.
Even for white children to have a person of color in a school as early as preschool, it shows to really just have significant difference. So I'm glad, to make a significant difference in the way that they succeed. So I'm really glad that we're having this conversation, but that I just want to make sure that we're always doing it from a place of intentionality. And I would like, ideally, if we're going to do something like this, to have someone come in and maybe assess where we are. Because I know we have the most diverse police force. I know that there's a level of diversity. But I would like to have maybe someone come in and kind of assess where is it that we stand? Where is there room for improvement so that we can really get to the bottom of some of the ways in which we perpetuate these systems that we don't even realize that we do? So yeah, happy to be here, grateful for the young people and the work that they're doing, and for us as leaders to be opening up our ears and listening to the community. So thank you.
Any other speakers in regards to the diversity piece? Moving on to a, to take a look at a permanent task force on racism, which I think for me is important that we just don't put things in place, that we need a task force to make sure that these things are going to be carried out over the next several years and not just putting something in place and it goes away in a year. So I don't know how people feel about a task force and if people might be interested in serving on the task force. So I put that out there to the committee if they have any ideas or suggestions as to looking at a task force on racism. Councilor Brown?
Yeah, as we discussed this, I think we should move also to try to define what a permanent task force is. And also, when we talk about folks interested in being a part of this task force, we should lay some type of ground rule of, you know, what's expected of them. And also, if they have to be Chelsea resident, if they have to be a Chelsea stakeholder. I would like to see youth involved in this. I would like to see senior management person. Obviously, when you talk about the task force, it's a broad perspective of duties and desires. I just really like to see if you just try to hold that down and have that defined.
Well, those are very good points. I think the task force would be responsible for meeting with people in the community and drawing up what the task force should be assigned to do and what the makeup should be. I think should come from the community. To the community, not for the city council or city manager to say this is what the task should be. It should come from the community into, you know, the council, into the city manager. That's my thought on it. I don't know if anybody else has any different opinion on that. Councilor Cooper.
Well, the task force is a good thing, but the task force should be formed of citizens' privacy. And it shouldn't be a paid position. It should be a task force where these people be essential among the time. And it's the residents who live in the city which are affected the most that will be in charge of it, not people that don't live in that city or people that don't understand what goes on here. The task force should be done by the people that live within our own community. And those will be, and it shouldn't be a paid position. It should be a position where the people do it to make sure that justice is being done.
Thank you for your comments. Anything else you want to add to it? Well, the task force will work on the parameters of what the task force should be and what the makeup of the task force should be. Councilor Damali?
All right, can you hear me? Okay, I just want to add that I also think that the task force should be made of either black, indigenous, or people of color. That that is a priority. And also, I'm not, I know typically when we have boards in the city or commissions that they're appointed by the city council. And I'm not necessarily sure that that's what needs to happen. I would like for it to be an independent civilian board that maybe to appoint it somewhere. As you said, Councilor Robinson, that it comes from the community. I don't know that it's something that needs to come through the channels of city hall. I would prefer it to be a bit more organic and citizen-driven.
Well, I agree. I don't think it should come from city hall. I think it should grow from out of the community. If they're going to have a voice, it should come from the community. Would you like to add anything?
I believe the Chelsea Youth Alliance foresee some form of, this Cheryl Watson, by the way, of task force to monitor what the city government is doing. The meeting that I had with them, they want it to be organic, as Councilor Vido has said. And they want to participate in it. And they want it to always be changing. So if we do automatically, when they hear what the city manager has to offer, what's the next step? And I think that's what the task force is there to help the city and to help the residents as to how to roadmap through systematic racism and get to some result whereby equality is at least thought of and reached in Chelsea. That's what I believe.
A participant has left the meeting.
Trying to figure out with our help, with the community help, and all of us together have a task force. Whether we call it a task force or a review board or whatever, they want it to be something that's outside of government to help government and help.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see none in the...
Councilor Robinson.
Who are they?
Hi.
Yeah, Marisol, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hopefully, my volume is not too high. I have a little trouble with this headset. But just wanted to commend you all and the Chelsea youth that have been leading these discussions in such a powerful way. I'm here today within my role as school committee member as a resident of District Three, equally concerned with all of you about, you know, what we're seeing and also holding a lot with pride about a lot of the good work that's happened and how can we continue to do the things that are working? And also take a step back and really listen and do a really good job of listening to what the community is actually bringing forward. So I'm really grateful that this conversation is happening. I can't see the full screen, so I'm not sure if other school committee members are present as well. You see Dr. Abeyba is our superintendent. But I'm very grateful that we're able to continue to keep these discussions going throughout our community in our respective roles. So he's going to be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other participants?
This is Adele Schlotzauer. I'd like to ask a question if I might.
Sure.
I just, I may be the only person who is ignorant on this matter, so I apologize. But I'm trying to understand if the purpose of the task force would be to look at systemic racism within city government and city, the parts of the city structure? Or is it to look outside of the city government into systemic racism?
I think, I think, I think it includes all those things that you mentioned. Besides city government, it's also in regards to doing, you know, the things that affect us housing-wise and with the police and everything else. It would include all the things that you just mentioned. Yes.
Okay, then I guess I would make, I would offer this thought that it's, I think it's at times it can be tough to pull a task force together. It's like we don't have a charter for the task force, but we don't have a task force for the charter. If that makes any sense. And, you know, it's how would, how would this get initiated and begun so that it would draw the types of organic movement and participation from the community that everyone seems to be seeking? Would folks understand what boundaries they have or what limits they might not have? And where they can go to try to investigate and look at issues?
Well, we'll be reaching out as a whole, to the whole community to have these discussions and figure out, you know, what is best suited for us here in the community to work on and deal with.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got some members from the young Chelsea Black community. The, just so we, anyway, I don't know if these were in the other room. So we kind of heard how we're going to, all right, so on the thing, thank you. So the last piece for me was to talk about a program of comprehensive and mandatory inherent bias training for all employees who work for the city. And also, you know, reaching out to other agencies and asking them also, I would imagine, to participate once we start having these discussions. So I don't know if anybody wants to add anything to that. I think that's a very important piece.
On the training that you set for employees, that includes every employee of the city, right?
Yes.
Who picked up the tag? Does the city itself or who will pay for the training?
Oh, we're not worried about who's going to pay for the training.
Well, you should be because it comes out of taxpayer dollars, right? So I don't want to pay for it. What should, do any other taxpayer in the city want to pay for it?
I would pay for it, Congress. I would pay for it.
Okay, so we got additional CPA two dollars.
I already paid.
Well, let's not get distracted about why we're really here, okay? All right, we play for, we pay for plenty of things that, you know, I might disagree with.
I'm paying for my wife.
Well, we're paying for food for the people in the city.
Wow, but taxpayer paying for that?
Yeah. Okay. So the last, the last...
Did you have something to say? I think you can add.
Yeah, just the response.
Well, we don't, we don't want to go back and forth.
No, go to jail.
No, we don't want to go back and forth. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager who has the opportunity to respond to the communication from the young Chelsea Black community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So many of you on the call know from our discussion last week that Chelsea Young Adult Alliance sent me a very thoughtful and quite comprehensive set of proposals, ideas for addressing systemic racism in the city of Chelsea in all different realms, education, public safety, housing, et cetera. And by no means do I have a comprehensive response tonight. This is going to require a fair amount of engagement and discussion within city hall about which pieces of this are doable, and many are, which pieces require legislative changes and some do, and which pieces, just for various reasons, we can't do. But by no means am I prepared to do that. We've just started our discussion. The solicitor and I had a lengthy meeting, a two-hour meeting this morning to start the process of going through this. We have two meetings scheduled next week for internal department heads on it. But I am, I do have some initial thoughts on the five specific proposals that were directed to me in my office as to things that the Chelsea Young Adult Alliance wanted me specifically to do. And I do have some initial thoughts on those, which I'm happy to share right now and without going into too much depth.
A participant has joined the meeting.
Ten-minute conversation. So I can just go through them one by one. I think a lot of you, but maybe everyone, has a copy of this document. I know it was circulated electronically after the last meeting. The stakeholders were at our last Tuesday meeting. But for those of you who don't, I can quickly go through the five specific requests that were made to me and then tell you my initial review. So the first specific request was that me as city manager, that I officially acknowledge that systemic inequities exist against minorities in the city of Chelsea and across the nation. And that's a kind of an easy one for me because I do acknowledge that. I acknowledge that in this country of ours, all governmental entities are infused, unfortunately, with systemic racism. And it's sort of inherent bias. And so I accept that. And I think I have publicly acknowledged that, both verbally and in writing. So at the request of the council and with my full support, the city declared racism as a public health emergency. That document is published, submitted to the council on our website. And I think inherent, and that is a recognition that there is systemic bias in institutions that need to be addressed. I also expressly acknowledge this in the statement that we had done a while ago, but actually got publicly released today with other metro mayors in this region, where we again acknowledge systemic bias in government institutions and pledge to address it through various actions, many of which this council has already talked about and will be something that we will be able to implement here in Chelsea. So I feel like on this first item, that it's sort of accomplished. If someone's looking for something more, I'm happy to discuss. The second item is a request specifically that we do create within the city. What you just The second item is a, a request specifically that we do create within the city, what you just talked about. An Office of Diversity and Inclusion. And I am in full support of that. I think that is something that many municipalities have. It will be a positive step forward for the city to have such an office. I will give you two caveats to it. One, the request is that it be within the HR department. I would argue, and after talking with the solicitor, I think she agrees, that we would prefer that it have more independent status and be an independent office that would report not to HR, but to myself and the solicitor. And so that's what we would be proposing in the creation of such an office. The only second caveat I have is, I'm not quite ready today, but I will be ready in a few weeks to recommend a structure for this office and a budget for this office. I am envisioning that initially, the office will probably be, for the moment, for fiscal year 21, one person. That we will hire a Director of Diversity and Inclusion. This is, this is not a low-wage job. This is typically a well-skilled, talented director whose background is in this field and whose pay will reflect that. It will be the pay of a high-level department head in the city. But for the first year, I think that person will likely be the sole occupant of the office. Over time, that office may have staff, but for FY21, it will probably be a one-person office. But in addition to the cost of the salary, I also want to ensure that that office has two other financial components to it when it's presented. A significant money set aside for training. The kind of inherent bias training that we just talked about, I would see being run and overseen by this director. And if we want all employees in Chelsea to have implicit bias training, this director would secure the, the services of the group, or the nonprofit, or the individual expert who would provide this training, and it would come out of that office. And so, in its initial budget for FY21, I need a robust number for training. And I'm trying to get a sense as to what that training would cost before I submit that proposal to the council. And then the second piece is one that's been mentioned a couple of times here, which is an initial assessment of the sort of state of municipal government when it comes to racism and inherent bias. And those kind of assessments are done, and there are entities that do them. And again, I want to have the cost of doing such an assessment in this office's first-year budget, so that that might be the first thing that gets done when the person is hired, is they engage an entity, a nonprofit, or some expert to do an assessment of the city before much else gets done, even perhaps before any training gets started. That will have a cost to it, which I'm still trying to identify. As soon as I identify those costs, which, this is not a multi-month effort, I think I will have something ready to present to the city council by its first meeting in September. It will likely be in the vicinity of $200,000 plus. It will be proposed to come out of stabilization money, because it's the only place we have funds at the moment. But it will be a request to create this Office of Diversity and Inclusion. And I feel, and at that point, it will be the council's decision, but I feel that will directly respond to this request, which I, I'm glad to see is kind of coming from the bottom up, from the community that's asking for this, because I personally think this is a good thing, and I'm, I'm looking forward to having such an office in the city. The third item that was requested directly to me is to make sure that I include racial equity requirements within the city's budgeting process. And I, I, I interpret that to require some commitment from me, that when I'm working on the budget with my department heads, I am, I am engaging with them and pressing them to make sure that within the money they're spending, they're putting an equity lens on the expenditure of city funds. I would expect that I would be assisted in that effort by the Diversity and Inclusion Officer that I hire. And so hopefully, by the time the budget process gets ramped up, which usually is at the beginning of the calendar year, that I will have in place this director who can assist in ensuring that an equity lens is in place for our budget process. I'm gonna jump to number five, because it's budget-related as well, and I think this was a direction that, this is another sort of budget issue, but it was a demand that I ensure that there's better civic engagement in the city's annual budget process. And I do think that does require some work on my part to ensure that minority communities, that the Chelsea Black community is more engaged. And I, after giving this a lot of thought with the city solicitor today, I think it starts with explaining the budget process to the residents of the city, more so than we have in the past. Municipal finance is a little bit of a strange animal, and it does take some understanding of it to understand where you have levers within a municipal budget. And so, one place I can start, and I pledge to start, is doing in January what I have sometimes, what I've done for new counselors. So when new counselors are elected, there's a training session that we run as a city for new counselors. And a big piece of that is a training on the budget. It's kind of a lesson 101 on municipal budget. And I think I could present something really helpful to the community, to the Chelsea Black community, to community at large, by just doing some PowerPoint presentation in January in a school classroom or auditorium, similar to what I've done to new counselors, and just walking through the budget process. What is a municipal budget? How does it get funded? You know, where, what's the reality of what discretionary money is available in a city like Chelsea? And I think understanding that would go a long way to better engagement. And I pledge to do that come this January. Right at the beginning of January, I pledged to have a public meeting. It may still have to be on Zoom, but hopefully we can actually gather somewhere. And I can do a, a, a training. I've done training for newly-elected municipal officials for the Mass Municipal Association, so I have some good material. And I feel like that will help to improve the level of engagement. So I think in doing that, I can respond to items three and items five. And that sort of leaves item four, and item four was that we reevaluate our boards and commissions to ensure that they are proper and equitable, and I, and the boards are more representative of the city's demographic. And again, that is on me to make sure that our boards are more reflective of the community than they're been. Again, I hope that I can be assisted in that effort by the Diversity and Inclusion Officer. It may be that all openings kind of get filtered through that office so that we can ensure that someone with that equity lens is looking at the applicants and the, the diversity of the pool, and is part of any interview process we do. So I feel like I can address this one, but again, with the assistance of this Director of Diversity and Inclusion. I would expect, if you're looking at timing, and then I'm gonna stop, that if the council were to adopt the appropriation request for this new office in the month of September, that we could probably, if we're, if we act expeditiously, have a director on board sometime in early November. Anticipating that, it takes about 30 to 45 days to try to find good candidates. And so that is my direct response to the five items that were addressed to me. Now, there are numerous other items in this comprehensive document that certainly have merit and deserve your attention. And all I can assure you is that with the city solicitor's help, I am engaging the required departments to work through these, and hopefully have some similar responses to you. But that will take a little more time than what I have had so far.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So under the office, with also the nonprofit, because you talk of training all other city employees, will the nonprofit also have to be in contact with this office for training?
So I envision this office as, as focused internally on the city and its, and, and its hiring, its practices, its policies, not outward-looking. This is an Office of Diversity and Inclusion to ensure that we're addressing internally systemic racism issues that exist in, in all organizations. It's not outwardly focused. It may be that we would want something like that, but that would not be, in my opinion at least, the focus of attention of this officer and this office. This would be, we're looking to address internal issues at City Hall to ensure that the programs and policies we have in place for our residents are, are, are reduced of any inherent bias.
But wouldn't the practice also be if nonprofits are receiving fundings and others are not receiving fundings, whether it's you, Basketball, or Pop Warner, or other organizations, wouldn't that be an issue also?
Oh, yeah, so the distribution of budgetary resources, and whether that is equitable, is absolutely within the purview of such an office, and that's why this person, as I promised, would be engaged in the budget process.
Can, can I just interject? So one policy that she may review is how we issue vendor contracts. And as you know, the state requires minority businesses. Maybe that's something she's reviewing, how we catch, whether or not we have contracts, or whether or not the contracts we issue are to nonprofits or for-profit businesses that have training of their staff. That could be something that the diversity person issues a new policy and works with the procurement office on. So, I mean, those are just ideas. I mean, we, we don't know what that person is gonna find, or what the assessment is going to find as to the nonprofits and the organizations that the city does do.
I'd like to thank the city manager, and actually, Bocero and the Yamamba children, yous can respond to Tom's comments, if you have any.
No, I have no comments right now. I think, I think it's great. I think it's amazing. I'm truly first, just want to thank the city councilors, the city manager, the city solicitor for building us, building these questions, to listen to our requests, to attending our rally, and really not just saying, but actually putting out a strategy, you can effort forward to really narrow our problems and our issues and come up with solutions that kind of extend out. It's one thing to say, hey, I'm going to establish this office, but then there's another portion to say, hey, I'm gonna put this project behind me. Office to ensure that the job is done properly, and I mean, I. So I just want to say thank you for that. Right now, just, I know those are the direct requests to city manager, and there's a lot more that we requested. So we look forward to see how that conversation kind of plays out. But thus far, I, I'm just personally thankful and I'm happy to hear how it's going to happen too. So hats off to you guys, because you guys really are setting example that.
I have a question. Chief Guy is on, but it's about law enforcement. We do have racism in our city, and I didn't witness him yesterday, two tenants going at it. One white, one black. The police has been called numerous before, it's from the black tenant. They haven't followed up on the issue for her, but when the white tenant calls, which has a problem too, on the books with the police. What job is the police doing in following the wrong employees? Before there's something really, really bad happening in our community because of two people fighting over racism, and the whole building is affected by it. So now we have little children with mental health issues because their parents are fighting with the white people, and the cops haven't yet to respond. When I was living in Everett, the Everett police, I didn't even know that my civil rights were violated until the police told me that it was, because they enforce that law. And on the books, that law is applied from the top fine. If you call someone out of their name, even as of name, it wouldn't be your Latino sister, or your the vice versa for blacks as well, because it's a civil rights issue. And I just want to know.
Well, we still have the chief. We still have the chief on. I, I'll ask the chief if he
Respond.
can respond to the situation. Chief Guy?
Leo, can, can you hear me, Leo?
Yeah, I can hear you.
So I, I, I caught some of that. It was, it was a little tough with the echo, but I, I can say this, with the any, any situations that develop, that certainly something sounds like there may be a, a civil rights violation. What we, what we want to do is, aside from just looking at it through a law enforcement lens, we want to understand what the deep-rooted issue is. We have offices that are trained from previous occupations in conflict with abortion. Make their practice to send offices to those specific type of calls, if not that day when it occurs, as a follow-up, jointly thereafter. So we can basically get individuals in the room to understand what the, what the conflict is. We've been very successful over the years in, in doing just that. And I guess it just kind of goes towards another situation where, where police officers are called upon to really wear many different hats. We, we welcome the opportunity to do so. And again, if I understood the remarks correctly, that, that's something we will certainly continue to do as well.
Thank you, Chief.
A participant has left the meeting.
Won't you come up here later, Mike?
Yeah.
I would just like to say thank you to our city manager and our city solicitor for hearing the Chelsea Young Adult Alliance, as well as CBC. Because when they speak, they speak on behalf of all of us as Chelsea Black community and residents in the city of Chelsea. I want to thank you for your acknowledgement that there is systemic racism here in Chelsea, because that's where it starts. It starts from the top down, and if our leader is recognizing that, then all should fall in place in terms of finding solutions to help alleviate systemic racism. I want to thank you for acting and responding so swiftly to the five points that you brought about here today. And I know there's over 50 demands set forth, so five is an okay start. And we just look forward to more conversation. And I just thank you that it, it, the resolution was taken serious, that it was addressed seriously. And we, I just want to continue to have such conversations, because it, it, it is an issue, and I just want to thank you for all of that. I want to thank you for even going as far as the budgeting. And it's one thing to say, okay, we're going to have a Diversity and Inclusion office, but we've also taken a step forward to unlock the budgeting that needs to be there in order for it to not only exist, but for it to continue on the longevity of this office. So, thank you.
No, you should come here, Ken. You got some mics here.
I hope you can hear me. I'd like to thank Councilor Yer for calling this subcommittee, along with you, who have Councilor Rock. We're also grateful to all the councilors that are listening, that are with, for providing your support. A lot of you have been family for the statehood, and in this, to get us to this point.
A lot of you are family for the statehood in this city to get us to this point. And the city manager, Tom, we are extremely grateful to you. The first thing is to listen. Doctors solve problems that listen. If families that listen, they do well there. On the day of March, you said you were here to listen, to understand the problem. As the city leader, we are hoping that targeted reform will be coming soon. They're not with anyone, but this is a good place to start. So in the days ahead, we are asking the councillors all years on deck to arrest discrimination, all discriminatory practices in the city. It starts
A participant has joined the meeting.
We say all lives man, blacks, white, men. They're separate. When you say black lives man, it's associated with all lives man. It is not only for the blacks here. The population is so small. Other races are bigger, and this is the most diversified city. The diversified city is in the city. They're one or more in Colorado. And when a rush starts, it will be devastating. But prevention is always better than anything. We looked everywhere. The young folks looked everywhere. They found out that
A participant has left the meeting.
Before opportunity, a progress service is missing in the city. We are not interested in the family structure. We're in this place, who handles? But it's the only thing that levels the playing field with it. Now make sure that when we go to the fire service, we can see people like us there. When we go to the police station, we can see in the random fire that everybody's getting promotion. We don't want the union's name to be on our neck. We don't want the next door floor seeing your job. Everybody in this city of Chelsea, you're very responsible city. We do the right thing. But when you do the people car, when you do the peeling, the ceremony is here. The smile has to spread from everyone, not only the Caucasians, not only the Spanish. So everybody need to bring their family here. When you do that peeling, that is what makes a society. If you go to a family who are one person is rich and the rest is poor, it's not good. And so, at the end of the day, if we pose the question, because city councillors should be asking quickly, why is there in that fire service that you don't, you can't count in your finger how many black people are in? Ron lost election to put her to Obama because he couldn't fill the binder, the binder of women. We went to the city police and picked up the last of they have over here, where they said that they don't have enough, that they are lacking in in the number of blacks or so. And that was in two zero, uh, two zero sixteen. So the challenge for every city councillor in California, the city manager, working with our, our best guy, who is Brian Guy, is to ask the question, four years down the line, what has happened in China? Appropriately formed, prevention is better than cure, for size. Because every institution, every organization has this. This department is the biggest department that does the budget from there. And so the money you pay to save for one suit pays for, for that cost. You don't want somebody to say, the last code, office code for that position, actually talking around to city city. That is a history that you guys need to be, and you're laughing. I know you're laughing because I wanna go to you. I just want you to help. I want you to help the city that you have put it in place because that is the watch. I am not coming to get a job in the city. I'm okay. My kids are okay. But we wanna make sure that there is a level field. It is the law, of the federal law, we want that to be implemented, right? Help.
We're here, we're
We love the city.
We're here, we're here tonight to move forward. Past is past, okay? I would ask the Yamamba kids, you wanna share what your next steps are for the community?
Yeah, um, can you guys hear me at the mic? Sorry. Sorry, I was, for those on the camera, I was off to the side. Um, and I was speaking initially to the side. Um, so we will be setting up a town hall meeting, a citywide town hall meeting. Um, we've heard that there was a request or a demand to really get the city's voices out there um, in a, in a, in a facilitated, open-mic dialogue kind of conversation that really opened the doors to everyone in the community. Uh, we've heard a few individuals speak, but we wanna hear more stories. Uh, we will make sure that there's an agenda provided, that it is, that that the speeches do occur, the stories are told in a regulated, concise, clear um, process. Uh, so that will be coming within the next few weeks. With that being said, we'll also be sure to keep following up with these requests and seeing how these, seeing how these are going to process. Um, and then on the, on top of that, we'll be sure, well, we will start documenting, um, because we have heard that request as well, as far as the documenting of stories and examples and and narratives. Um, although we do have, uh, the narrative that we could all kind of look at on the TV every day. Um, but there, we will start to kind of regulate and process that, that Google document. So we'll share that with the community on social media, on public boards, on community boards. Uh, the task force will continue this conversation. We'll make sure the entire community is heard. We'll, we'll make sure the entire community does hear about this and that the right steps are taken.
Just to add to that, um, we also want to start, um, setting up meetings with the appropriate heads in the appropriate places to further the steps that we need to, um, take care of, such as the superintendent to discuss education and how we can see those changes come to fruition there. And just to add to the topic of forum, we wanna get the community's voice so that, you know, everyone can hear these stories and see why we need change. But I just wanna say that this is much bigger than, you know, the microaggressions that black people face every day. This is about, you know, redoing the structures that we have in place that make it appropriate for those microaggressions to occur and go without punishment and without, you know, being changed. So we're definitely gonna start, you know, getting the community more involved just so that we can, you know, see why we need this change to happen, even though, as Kai said, it's unbelievable every day.
Yeah, and and just for those who aren't clear, um, the demands that Thomas started, that the city manager started, started addressing, um, were focused on public health, public safety, um, housing, and education. Um, so with that being said, right, those are really the foundations and the principles of the community. Um, so we do expect to meet with the chief of police, um, with the head of housing, with the head of public health, um, and with the head of, sorry, with the superintendent. Um, and we do know that there have been, there has been process made within each area. Uh, but we're here to just follow up on that process and make sure that it continues to be made and will be made four, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line, and we don't regret on that. So, thank you.
Well, I think a- as you can see, you have a lot of support on the city side to help move this agenda forward. You know, so whatever you need, is just reach out to city manager, city solicitor, city council. You know, we're here to help.
The Commissioner of Public Works, Fidel, has also been instrumental in meeting with me and the city manager on implementation of the progress and moving forward. Phil Fidel, I thank Fidel because he has been a great supporter and he turned this process around.
And I wanted to ask Fidel, if you want to weigh in on any of the things. Appreciate everything that you do.
No, we will reach out to everyone, local, corporate, and foreign. Um, and our resolution and action, our first version of action steps show, we reached out to a lot of corners, a lot of people. Um, I see a few individuals on the line who spoke and got advice from. Um, so every soul will be turned and we'll make sure that we, since you're my mentor.
I, uh, what, who is present during this meeting is councillor Robinson. And I have invited members of our public boards. I've noticed members from our human rights commission, our board of health, our school committee, not just our city councillors. Um, so, um, I believe Reverend Ridley is on there and some department heads and
Both police unions.
And the police unions, as members of our patrolmen, I have noticed. So I, I just want you to realize that it is, has been a community effort just to listen to you tonight. And I'm proud of all of you who attended this meeting via webex because we can't do this without our entire crew.
Amen.
So in closing, I'd just like to thank everybody who did join us here tonight.
Um, I'm not sure because I was in the other room, but I just wanted to request, um, if, when it asks that we have an asylum for representative crime rate, who was, um, who was a hero in the civil rights, as a civil rights leader. Um, he passed away July seventeen. And he helped organize in nineteen sixty-three, Martin and Washington, leading part of the Freedom Rite, leading the Southern Martin Martin march in nineteen sixty-five. And I just wanted to add, before we have him on the silent, that I love this quote and I live by it every day. And it's, if not us, then who? If not now, then when? So we all need to ask ourselves this question as we stand up and step out, um, as a, as a nation for a policy service and a call to action. So we, if you have more of the silent.
Yeah, we can do that. Just to add to that, one of the sins was, I'm here to create good trouble. Okay, thank you. Thank everybody for participating with us tonight. Remember, we're here to help, whatever you need.